Good morning. An half a day, the Committee on General Government Operation Appropriation Housing is now called to order. Today is Monday, November 9th. Time now is 10:30. Welcome to everyone connected by Zoom and those tuning in via television or the YouTube channel. Thank you for your patience and for commenting this Zoom platform while we maintain social distancing mandates. Notice for this public hearing were disseminated via email to all centers and all main media broadcasting hours on Friday, October 30th and Thursday, November 5th. The bill that we'll be addressing today is Bill 377-35COR. I introduced by authored by Senator Telo Tydewe, the minority leader, both sponsored by Senator Jim Moylan and myself. An act to amend section 30107 of Article 1, Chapter 30, Division 3, Title 5 Guam Code annotated relative to timely issuance of opinions requested of the Office of Attorney General of Guam. Rules of the general rules of the conduct of this hearing. This Zoom meeting is hosted by my staff and will mute all Zoom participants until called upon by myself. Members of the committee and or noncommittee members wishing to speak may indicate their desire to meet through the in-app chat feature. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by me before speaking and begin by stating their name for record keeping purposes. When called to speak. When called to speak, please ensure that you are unmuted. Committee members will be allowed to pose a question to an individual testifying, also the non non committee members. Questions and testimonies shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character of the or the motive of any individual or any of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any bodies of this general conduct will result in the move on the public hearing by my host. Please ensure that your video remains on throughout the hearing. Participants must be visible at all times and not engage in any other activity during hearing. If you're drinking coffee or soda or eating a snack, I have no problem with that one, all right? Failure to maintain visibility may cause your removal from meeting live stream. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me today. We have Senator Luis Munya, your first address. This time I have Senator Kelly Mars Titano. I have Senator Jim Moylan and we have the author of the bill, Senator Telo Tydewe. I'd like to invite, we also have folks from the Attorney General's office and and an individual that will also be testifying. And we have, I'll start off with Deputy Stephanie, Stephanie Minjola from the Office of the Attorney General's Office. We have a good friend of mine, Fred Nishiaro from the Office of Attorney General's Office. I got Carlos Paldone from the Office of Attorney General's Office. We also have President J.B. Attali Jr. That would also be testifying. So with that, I'd like to ask the author of the bill, Senator Telo Tydewe, the minority, provide an opening statement, please. Ma'am.
Sajdus Masi, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity. Bill, Bill number 377-35, an act to amend 30107 of Article 1, Chapter 30, Division 3, Title 5 Guam Code annotated relative to timely insurance of of opinions requested by the Office of the Attorney General, which was authored by myself. And I'd like to thank my co-sponsors to this bill, Senator Jim Moylan and yourself, Mr. Chair, Joe Sin Augustin, who, by the way, your father had a hand into the creation of the bill back in 1970 when when they were talking about the opinions or providing information for elected officials. I believe that was, if I'm not mistaken, Public Law 19-15, which your father had had been a part of. But anyways, again, half a day, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for scheduling this public hearing on a very straightforward measure. You know, Bill 377-35 and for this opportunity to briefly introduce the bill. Mr. Chair, Bill 377 seeks to clarify in law specifically, specifically section 30107 of Chapter 30, Title 5 Guam Code annotated relative to opinions of the Attorney General, that an opinion requested by a member of Illesla Turanguahan shall be issued no later than 10 working days after the Attorney General's receipt of such request. For the record, section 30107 currently requires the Attorney General's Office to provide a copy of an opinion to the Legislative Secretary and the compiler of law within seven days after delivering such opinion to a requesting agency or person. For that benefit of the listening audience, section 30107 is for publication purposes only. The law is currently written, does not establish a timeline for the Attorney General's Office to provide an opinion, which in the case of requests made by members of the legislature, which means what actually could mean weeks, if not months, before an opinion is provided. Whether a request for an opinion concerns the governor's ability to utilize excess general fund revenue or DOA's personal rules and regulations on double pay, the timely issuance of an opinion from the Attorney General Office has a significant impact on the local government, particularly policies development and the use of limited public funds. For this reason, Mr. Chair, I offered Bill 377 as a means to promote greater efficiency when it comes to opinions that are requested by the Lesla Turanguahan by requiring the Attorney General's Office to issue opinions to requesting senators no later than 10 working days after receiving such request and imposing $100 administrative fine for each violation. Fines collected will go into a government ethics fund. Similar to a proposal I authored earlier this term related to timelines and administrative penalties concerning land use applications before the Application Review Committee, Bill 377 is yet another measure that I put forward to help close operational gaps. Mr. Chair, I look forward to comments and questions regarding this measure and will work closely with your committee to make an amendment, to make any amendments that may be necessary to move Bill 377 forward. Sajdus Masi.
Thank you, Senator Telo. With that, I'd like to ask, before I ask the Attorney General's Office to testify, I'll ask Mr. J.B. Attali. Because I know the Attorney General's Office got some opinions on this bill. But Mr. Attali, if you if you would like to begin, sir, and then then I'll ask the Attorney General folks to office folks to make up. Sir. Go ahead and unmute, unmute first, J.B.
Hello?
There you go. Now we can hear you.
Okay. Good morning and half a day to all. You know, I really like this bill because this bill kind of like tells me that when we need an opinion from the Attorney General's Office on a timely basis, you know, we need it because it, I mean, it just, it would bring cure to the problem if a legal opinion from our Attorney General was to issue one, okay? And then if we disagree with that, then we could take it to court and see where the court takes it from there. But just, you know, what I was trying to get at is with the Attorney General's Office, I've approached you guys twice through a letter, okay, with my incident with with regards to my election for the Timuning Vice Mayor. I, I, I was simply asking for a legal opinion. Can my opponent utilize the Timuning Senior Social Hall for his residence? And I couldn't get a response from you guys. And I mean, I'm not here to put down anybody. I just would like to, you know, I mean, the Guam Election Commission created this law through the legislature and I followed it. Why can't my opponent follow it? Because I established evidence, witnesses to establish the truth. You know, I didn't just come up and make up these things. These all, I mean, I had copies of all the documents that you need that my, my, my opponent falsified, put falsified information on his, his application so he can qualify to run against me. And all I was just asking was the, the Attorney General's Office twice since eight, August 2000, August 2020. I asked for them to to look into it. I got no response. I asked them to look into it again, coupled like a week before the election because I wanted these things to be resolved prior to the general election. And I think it would just be fair if somebody can just give me a legal opinion about what transpired with my protest. And I don't, I mean, you know, that's why I like this law because this law, I wish this law was enacted before the election, before my, my protest went out because it would have really resolved my, my issue. You know, and then and the only, the only thing that I was trying to look for was can my opponent use the senior citizen's social hall for his residence? That was it. And I couldn't even get an answer from you guys. I mean, I don't know who else to turn to. I mean, I look up to the, to you guys as our elected leaders and to help guide me to finding out the, the, the right thing to do and what was the, the legal thing to do. And that's basically it, all it was. And then I'm just curious to know, will this law get passed? Because it needs to be done and I really wish that the Attorney General's Office can look into this thing still because my protest is still not there and I'm looking already forward to going to court. But if the Attorney General can give me an opinion, maybe I don't have to go to court. You know, so that's why this is a very good bill that, Telo, that you are introducing because I really just wish that this thing was there before August 27, 2020 because if this thing really affected me and because for whatever reason why the Attorney General didn't respond, the office, why they didn't respond, I don't know. I don't know if they're just swamped with work or what, but still, some decisions have to be made on a timely basis. And that's what I think why this bill is, would be awesome to have in place right now. Thank you.
All right, and thank you, Mr. Attali. And I'm, I'm gonna state, maybe not in defense of the Attorney General's Office, but as a former police officer, any accusation made on anybody, there has to be an investigation and the Attorney General's Office is gonna have to do that. Then they'll give their statement, but not necessarily maybe provide you an opinion, but be able to do whatever they need to do that's related to the Guam Election Commission. And that's an action that they would have to handle on their own separately, that's separate from your, your, your request. But we'll just move along. Stephanie, will you be the one speaking first or would it be Carl? And then we close it up with Fred or?
I'll be speaking first.
All right. Thank you, Stephanie. Go ahead.
I get the lucky role of being of having reading, read aloud hour this morning. So I will read into the record our written testimony that we've provided to your office. We've also, for easy reference, uploaded it into the group chat here in Zoom. But if I could just take a brief moment to respond to Mr. Attali as it relates to Bill 377. First, we certainly appreciate the concerns that you have and for all constituents to reach out to our office. And at minimum, of course, everyone should have an expectation of a response from our office, whatever it may be, whether it's well received or not. But as your concern relates to 377, this bill, to clarify, would not actually address the issue because the bill as written addresses issues of legal opinions requested specifically by members of the legislature, which we do provide in addition to the 40 to 50 government agencies we service. We generally do not provide, not generally, we do not provide legal opinions to private citizens in their private capacities, just to provide a bit of context. That said, you do touch on a few issues and as Senator Telo mentioned that are raised in our testimony that I'll read into the record and maybe we can talk through this morning. So here it is. Our testimony is on Bill number 377-35COR dated today, November 9th, 2020. Half a day, Senator Sin Augustin and members of this committee, thank you for the opportunity to present testimony on Bill number 377-35. We recognize our statutory mandate to issue legal opinions to members of this body and understand the concern for response times, which we acknowledge very widely. However, the 10-day deadline proposed by Bill 377 is impractical and we respectfully express our opposition to the measure. Across 56 U.S. jurisdictions, most timelines for the issuance of AG opinions are based on internal guidelines. Three jurisdictions address statutory timelines for issuing opinions requested by legislatures. In Texas, where opinions can only be requested by Legislative House Committee and not individual members, the deadline is 180 days from the request date with allowance for later submission upon written notice and justification. In Montana, opinions are due three months from request with, with allowance for later submission upon determination that the question is complex enough to justify additional time. In Tennessee, the law calls for issuance, quote, "as expeditiously as possible," end quote, "not by a date certain." The time necessary to draft a sound legal opinion varies based on legal factors, for example, the complexity of the issue, external factors, for example, a lack of information from the requister, and operational factors, for example, managing competing priorities with limited resources. Looking, for example, at California, the AG's office sets internal guidelines for issuing opinions on questions of law. On the issue of timelines, their guidelines explain, after a draft opinion has been prepared, it is circulated internally within the Attorney General's Office for extensive review and revision. This process is crucial to ensuring the quality and value of a written opinion and the process can be protracted. Due to many variables, it is often not possible to accurately predict when a particular opinion will be issued. Setting aside cross-jurisdictional comparisons, legal opinion requests from this body are received among the hundreds of opinion requests from our 40-plus client agencies and a multitude of other competing priorities in our Solicitors Division, including advising agencies on personnel matters, particularly adverse actions and agency investigations, and representing agencies before the Civil Service Commission. Reviewing and approving all intergovernmental and intra-governmental agreements requiring signature by Imega Haga, which sometimes includes negotiations of agreement terms. Reviewing and approving for form and legality all government contracts requiring signature by Imega Haga, including review of procurement records for compliance with procurement law. Providing legal advice in all phases of all procurements above $500,000. Representing agencies in appeals from procurement protests before the Office of Public Accountability. Developing procurement templates and forms for agency use. Advising, assisting with reviewing and approving agency administrative roles and regulations. Advising and assisting boards and commissions, including advising on open government law requirements. Representing agencies in administrative adjudication hearings and processes, including disciplinary proceedings. Assisting agencies in responding to time-sensitive FOIA requests. Providing training on procurement, open government law, FOIA, and personnel adverse action processes. Reviewing and providing input for OAG positions on or responses to proposed legislation. And assisting with, or when necessary, handling select civil litigation cases. In fiscal year 19, we received over 220 requests for legal opinions for or information and guidance. Get any mean, that trend to sing one of his letter in Guam, we received at least 22 requests for legal opinions, five of which were received in a single month. About 30% of these requests involved an irregularity. For example, we did not receive enough information, the request wasn't clear, legislative legal counsel had already opined on the matter, or the question did not involve an appropriate topic, whether because it involved internal rules, internal disputes, potential litigation involving agencies or entities we represent, or was less a legal question and more of a policy decision, et cetera. We also received requests for review or requests for testimony on more than 60 OAG-related bills. Since 2017, our office has had between 12 to 14 attorneys in our Solicitor Division, including the deputy, four to five of whom are assigned to a specific agency or group of agencies. The remaining solicitors provide services to over 40 government agencies. In contrast, you mean, that trend is saying one of his letter in Guam staffs 30 to 40 legal research and policy analysts. And as an entirely separate branch of government, rightfully and necessarily has a dedicated legislative counsel who is supported by an assistant legal counsel. A.G. Camacho and our team remain sensitive to the urgency of issues, but time to work is necessary to ensure quality of work. We are also bound, we are bound by our ethical responsibilities as lawyers to ensure we provide competent representation. Bill 377 proposes for fines collected to be deposited into our government ethics fund to be used by the Guam Ethics Commission and executing its duties, including investigating alleged violations. The slight irony in this is that the exact policy measure it proposes simultaneously risks violations of our roles of professional conduct. Because the time required for preparing opinions varies widely based on differing circumstances, rushing an opinion risks violating our duty to prevent competent service. In juggling responsibilities, attorneys must exercise judgment in prioritizing matters. The extremely short deadline and fine proposed would risk the need for our office to set aside other urgent matters that may not result in personal financial penalties, but may result in detrimental effects to the legal and financial positioning of the government if other deadlines are missed. For example, procurement, contract review, or court filings. As the legal office of the executive branch, such actions could constitute violations of our ethical duties to our clients, including competency, loyalty, and zealous representation. We understand the concern expressed by the introduction of Bill 377, but we hope this testimony provides a more informative context within which to understand the impracticality of this proposal. Don't lose, Sajdus Masi, party temple meeting, sincerely, signed by myself, Stephanie Eman Diola, General Counsel, Deputy Attorney General for the Division of General Counsel.
Thank you, Steph. Carl, Attorney Carl, do you have anything you wanted to say, testify on? I'd like to also recognize Senator Teresa Liza have also joined us today. This is more, Carl, you have anything?
No, Mr. Chair, I, you know, the, the testimony that the General Counsel read into the record is the testimony of the Office Attorney General. I'll be available to answer any questions or to engage in any discussion that the committee would like.
All right. Thank you. Fred, do you have anything you wanted to say other than to echo the same as what Carl just stated? Or you're pleading the fifth?
Maybe I do want to echo some of the things Stephanie said and I appreciate Senator Telo Tydewe you being open to some amendments. You know, at, at the end of the day, our office also wants to do a good job. We recognize that every opinion that we issue is gonna be used government-wide. Just like when you write laws, it has impact to every government agency or every citizen here on Guam. So when we issue opinions, we do take our time and just like how you have a, a public hearing. Well, first you start with research on your bills, the writers. After you go through your internal process, you go through a public hearing. And once it does get on the floor, if it's a very important bill, you go through the process of a committee of a whole and then finally into debate and a vote. And that, the purpose of that is to get the best product you can for the people of Guam. And basically, we go through the same procedure. And so although I'm not in the Solicitors Division, just because I'm probably the, the oldest dag here in the, the agency, you know, it's just because I have some institutional knowledge. A lot of times opinions before they go out, they run it through me just to say, hey, Fred, do you remember anything from back when about the potential impact this opinion may have? So with that being said, I do echo what Stephanie did say. I, I, I do not encourage a 10-day rule to be implied on us for those reasons. So thank you for your time and I too will be available for questions.
Well, well, you know what, Fred and Carl and Stephanie and for my colleagues. You, you see all the bills written initially starts out with exactly how it's written in law today. It's supposed to get, it's supposed to be about seven, 10, seven days. How, how would you give us your opinion and say that maybe 10 working days, you guys will at least tell us where you're at? You know, you're working on it, it's ongoing, it's, it's due to the constraints and stuff and stuff. At least we know there's movement or there's something going on. I mean, wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't that be a wise, possible recommendation by the Attorney General's Office to give to us? So we can consider that on the bill and maybe the hundred dollars, the hundred dollars would just come from leaving anyway. So the office won't feel it, you know, even is making good money. I'm just kidding. I'm just, okay, but I'm just trying to get at is really, I think the intent of this bill is specifically to get an AG opinion out. I, so not necessarily in 10 days, Fred, it's not talking about get it out in 10 days. And that's how it's written. But if you, if Stephanie and Carl and yourself, Fred, would say, well, in 10 days, we can give you something. But you know, Fred, I bother you a lot and so and I, and I bother you after seven days, after 10 days, then I say, where we at? But all I'm saying is that I think that the, my colleagues here probably gonna say, where we at? We're waiting for it. I think that, that's what was stressed out, Senator Telo says. But if, if you can, give, give us what you believe could work on this bill. To just honestly say, no, it's not gonna work, you know that.
So Senator, my response on Nata is not good enough for you, right?
Well, you and I talk a lot, Fred, okay, and you and I go back.
But with, with that being said, Senator, we understand, you know, the, the legislature obviously have priorities, right? There is an exception to the rules that for the legislative process, whereas you waive the, you go through a process to waive the public hearing and go into emergency sessions. The governor may call you into emergency sessions, right? Before the court, if there's such a legal important question, there's an exception to the rule where you can just pose a question, certify a question to the Supreme Court for an immediate answer. And you know, Senator, I don't, I don't know, and you know what, I haven't discussed with the AG, but I don't know that we would oppose that if the legislature felt it was such an important process that that type of process go through as well. You, you know what I mean, that there be a certification requirement, just similar to like a court. If an opinion as opposed to something from the court is so important, then maybe a process like that. It's, it's used in other places where committees may have to submit to the AG's office. And based on that, we put a priority on it as well. So what I'm saying is there are exceptions to the rule of, you know, what our normal process would take. But everyone cannot be treated in the same fashion for the reasons Stephanie spoke out.
Okay, so, so maybe giving us a status quo, a status of it is, is what you're saying? You, you, you wouldn't recommend that to be adjusted in the bill?
Because the, the case law, because the research, you know, in 10 days, honest, Mr. Speaker, sometimes we just going to our, Mr. Chairman, sorry about that. The, the process that we go through of just getting the facts correct could change. But you know what, Carl is the solicitor and he can speak more thoroughly on this issue.
Okay, we'll throw Carl under the bus. Carl, maybe you may want to speak on that before I ask the author of the bill. I'm just trying to get, get a warm and fuzzy feeling where the Attorney General's Office is coming from. You know.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think, I think the, you know, what you started talking about in terms of can we give you a status update on where your requests are? I think that's something that we've discussed internally and, and that would, you know, increasing and improving that communication on where we are, you know, is something that, 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 you know, that, that might be a good idea. And I know that, Mr. Chair, you and, and Dagnishihara have that kind of conversation often. And so that helps you know at least where we are and what we're, you know, what, what, what we're doing and maybe even where we're leaning. I think the issue though is that to be able to give you a certain opinion in a, in an amount of time, even a status sometimes, it all depends, Mr. Chair, on, on the complexity of the question as Stephanie has, has addressed already. There may be some instances where what you ask, it's very clear what the law is. Either the stat, it's very clear from the statute or from the case law. And sometimes we're able to even give, you know, opinions over the phone, not so much an opinion, but just kind of a consultation. not so much an opinion, but just kind of a consultation over the phone, saying, this has already been settled, this is easy, we can do that. But most of the opinion requests that come in are more in that gray area where there's more complexity involved and which, not only notwithstanding what the law is and how to analyze the law, but even just trying to, one, ascertain the, you know, the exact question that is being asked, and then, two, trying to find out or gather all the background information and whether there's a record. And that takes some period of time also. So that's why it's very difficult for us to say, yeah, we can get something to you in ten days, where we may not even have, you know, the whole story put together. And as you know, attorneys, folk, you know, different folks may think that's a simple question, but for attorneys, we always turn it into a more complex question than what other folks think. And, but, but, but there's a necessity to that. We've got to kind of look at the whole background of the case. We got to find out what the history is, maybe do some legislative history. But getting back to your point, Mr. Chair, I think that that's a good idea just in terms of improving that kind of communication with respect to the status of your request.
All right, thank you. Senator Tello, I'm going to start with you to ask questions, and then we move on from there. Oh, Stephanie, you wanted to make a statement, ma'am, before Senator Tello?
Yeah, if I could, yes, please, thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could just add it, to clarify, the deadline proposed in the bill is the response deadline versus the publication deadline. So the ten working days for us to issue a, proposal is for us to issue a final opinion within ten days versus taking the time necessary to issue the opinion and then having, what's in current law, seven or ten to publish the final version. If the change would be, and I of course echo and share, echo the sentiments and share the position of my colleagues Dag Nishihara and Dag Esbaldon, that we can certainly provide updates. And if those, if the proposal would be that those are provided in writing, then, you know, we would support that as well. But we do, you know, in our defense, and in similar to your relationship with Dag Nishihara, on the seventh day, we do the same, especially in this thirty-fifth term. I have had follow-up phone calls with Senator Titigui, with Senator Moylan, with Senator Tullahi, with Senator Marsh, on their request and the status of their request, and have tried to handle it that way as well. So I just wanted to clarify what the actual proposal is in the law that we're considering a change to. And then, yes, echo the sentiments that we would, we would support that kind of change in the process. We can.
All right, all right, thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
All right, Senator Tello, please. Oh, unmute first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yeah, thank you so much for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the, and thank you for the Attorney General's office to be here. This is, having all three individuals here is, is nice to have. We've got a full panel here, and I appreciate the testimony from Javier Italic as well. And, you know, I hope his question is answered right away, you know, because this is, this is concerning, especially in the village of Tumuning. I'm from the village of Tumuning, coming to think of it, you know, and I'd like to find out what's going on there. But you know, the testimony that you provided, I wish I'd had this ahead of time. I really wanted to go over everything that you put, but, you know, as I look at your testimony, it reminds me of Rev and Tax, all, their whole to-do list. It reminds me of Public Health and their whole to-do list. I mean, you look at some of these agencies, they, they have, you know, so much responsibilities that they have to put through and in a timely manner. So I greatly appreciate seeing this whole list of the things that you provide. I'm sure I've visited your website too as well, but there's no doubt in my mind that you're very busy. Not, you know, anybody who reads this will see that you're very, very busy. But, you know, your office is very critical, you know, especially to the legislature because of the bills that we pass, the laws that we pass. And it's important that we hear from you. And you know, Steph, thirty to forty individuals working at the legislature, not all of them have legal background at all, you know, probably only like a handful does, you know. So I wish we did have thirty to forty legal advisors at the legislature, then we wouldn't be bothering the AG so much. But I just want to also thank you, Steph, because you do take my calls. I greatly appreciate that, and I'm sure you do as well for the other senators as well. Stephanie, how long is a FOIA request requirement? For if anybody requested for a FOIA, what's the timeframe on a FOIA request?
Statutory deadline is four working days, and under certain circumstances, under, if you meet certain criteria or the extensive, extensiveness of the search required, up to ten days extension.
And that's for a FOIA, correct?
It's for a FOIA, which means that all the records already exist, so we're not doing too much thinking. We're just doing record searching.
And it's provided, yeah, okay. A lot of the questions I had was actually answered in your testimony, which was a very nice thorough testimony. But there is like, is there anything operate, what operational changes can, can be made to help expedite your office with response efforts? What can we do?
Maybe I'll take a quick shot at that, and this is from my years working with Department of Education. When I wanted to expedite it or a legal opinion from the AG's office with regard to some DOE issue, what I would do is I would do the research, the writing, and submit it to the AG, who not necessarily would issue an opinion as a result, but he or she would concur with it and return it back. And so, Senator, maybe that is a way, you know, a compromise, sort of say, using your legal counsel, and they could write, and we could concur, or, you know, if, I guess if we disagreed, we could put that in writing. But that's thinking outside the box, that's something different, that maybe there is a compromise that we could help each other out with.
Okay, yeah, I saw that, you mentioned earlier about the, you know, when it comes to the Supreme Court asking for a, I don't know the legal term of it, but there's one where you can expedite a decision from the Supreme Court. And, you know, I don't, I don't see the legislature taking, you know, advantage of every, you know, if I kick someone down the hall or something like that, I need your legal opinion, do I get away with it? Something like that, you know, I mean, take advantage of the situation. I think it's really relevant when it comes to time-sensitive, you know, questions that we need to be, that need to be answered, or how we're going to move on something if it's time-sensitive. So I think what you mentioned earlier about having a committee come together, maybe we can work with the office to construe what is considered, you know, you know, very time-sensitive and needs an answer right away. So I heard that part of you, and I think that's a good idea, you know. Not only providing legal, our legal counsel to provide an opinion and concur, but I think a committee to get together to provide a certified copy of a question that needs to be answered in a timely manner might be another opportunity to go through. You know, when it comes to the governor's request for opinions, you know, it just seems that the Attorney General, it's really quick to answer her request. But when the, and if I'm not mistaken, you know, we're co-equal branches, that's what everybody says. But then again, it's not in the organic act to say it's co-equal branches, by the way. But anyways, it sure is funny how she gets an answer really quick. But when, when the legislature asks for something that's just as important, it takes a while. So I just need that, you know, fairness on both, you know, sides of the governor's office as well as the legislature, the administration. But thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll let my other colleagues speak and save the end for last, save it.
All right, thank you, Senator Tello. Senator Louise Munia, please, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I wasn't expecting to go next, but thank you for that. So I was just, yeah, I'm looking over the bill, and I can see the, the reason why this bill came out because there have been several incidences where we've attended public hearings and, and the AG wasn't available for, to testify. And so it kind of leaves us in limbo, and then we usually would have to wait until we get an opinion from them. I think it has been getting better, though. So if, if, at least want to give the AG some props for actually getting better in issuing us opinions a little bit sooner. But yeah, there was a time where I remember we've had some, several public hearings, and we're like, well, we wish the Attorney General was here so that we can find out a little bit more about, you know, their opinion on the bill. So I can see why this bill came up. But the, but again, like Attorney Nishihara has mentioned, that there are ways for us to find a common ground where we can help each other out, where the legislature can help the AG's office, and the AG's office can help the legislature in return. So I don't have any questions for the AG's office at this time, but I do appreciate all of their testimony. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Senator Kelly Marsh, Tidno, please.
Situas ma si, Mr. Chair, and I do also appreciate the testimony from the AG's office. It was quite thorough, like so any point pretty much that I had been thinking of, they did cover. You know, I absolutely support timely responses and want to make sure that, that those really important opinions come forward. But, you know, I was trying to weigh out in my own mind the different issues that, that would need to be balanced. And, you know, I remember at the budget hearing, hearing about the shortages of personnel and how even just interviewing to try to fill in those situations was, was being slowed down. And so, yeah, it just seems like there needs to be some sort of balance of considerations. And it was important to hear what some of the standards are elsewhere. You know, I remember from the FOIA training that was held last year, at the beginning of last year, that are, that actually, our best practice, the best practices of the states is quite different. If I remember correctly, and I may not be remembering correctly, but something like the best practices in the states is thirty days for a FOIA request for a variety of reasons. And so, you know, with modernization, the way, the different ways that government runs nowadays and so forth, these considerations do need to be weighed out so that it's quality work, it's not pushing other priorities aside, but still keeping us in the running. And so I did appreciate the suggestion of, if it's, if it's not something that's a standard practice, to, on the seventh or tenth day, to be updating the legislature on the status of their request. And so one of the things I was thinking about, and I can ask any of the three that are here from the AG's office. So given that technology has changed, do you see any value, or is it something that occurs at all, to posting these requests online just so that, you know, let's say my office wanted to kind of understand the landscape and just be able to look on your website and say, okay, this month there were five requests from the legislature, and I see that I'm the fourth one. So maybe, well, like I said, either any of the three is fine to hear from the AG's office, because I, you know, I'm also trying to weigh out the bureaucracy of it all. Like, we don't want to make so many layers that we're actually inhibiting some expediency. Is it possible to, to put those up online and, and, I guess, show the ones that are complete, or, you know, maybe just a little bit of a status update there that it's been received, and maybe a couple of stages just so that we have assurance of, of its progress?
I can take that one.
Okay.
If I'm understanding the question correctly, you're asking if we can post your request on our website and indicate the status of our response to your request, whether it's pending, received, pending, or issued? Is that the question?
Yes.
Yes, we could probably do that. I think, I don't know, in terms of what would take away from that is just how we generally work with your offices in reviewing and discussing your requests. But to list that on our website, that should be fine.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it creates some transparency, it creates some accountability, I guess, if you will, but it also creates an understanding from our office. There's fifteen of us. So, you know, we don't know at any month how many requests you've received in addition to all the other responsibilities that you've listed. But if we see that there's only one this month, and we can have some discussion about the complexity of the request, or if we see that there were eight this month, I mean, at least we have a little bit of understanding of where things are. And it might help us to figure out how to highlight, you know, the priority and have some discussion with the office about the priority of our particular request. Yeah, so that was really the only question. Because like I said, and as the former senators have mentioned, the testimony was pretty thorough and touched a lot of bases. So Situas ma si, Mr. Chair, for, well, yeah, I guess you had already asked if there were any suggestions on their part. And I really did like the question on what might be able to be streamlined operationally, because sometimes that can be key. Having the operational issue be adjusted to help address the situation. So I think, I think that's something the office perhaps could continue to think about. About if there are any, is there any ability to adjust operationally as, as time goes on? So Situas ma si, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Kelly. Senator Jim, you have any questions, sir?
Mr. Chairman, testimony was really informative. My questions were answered, want to allow the Attorney General's office to get back to work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Senator Theresa, our attorney, no, I'm just kidding, Senator Theresa, please.
Thank you for those testifying, Mr. Athalik and the deputy AGs, and of course, our general counsel from the AG's office, thank you. If I could just clarify a couple of things. So I agree with your testimony, and I'm very sensitive to that, that there are opinions that take longer than others. And so we really cannot, you know, we don't want you to shortcut that work. We want it to be done thoroughly, that I think that's the intent of the bill. However, I just think they're trying to prevent, or, you know, just determine maybe by this hearing how sometimes these opinions are prioritized so that we can be, and have confidence that, you know, that you are addressing all the concerns equally. Or if they're not equal, then by all means, that's fine, too. I think you should have priorities, but we just want to get a clear sense of how those are determined. So, you know, the statute says that the AG shall give, when requested or required, his opinion in writing to public officers. And if I could just clarify, public officers in this statute, does that mean the agency heads? Is that how you give advice to the AG, I mean, to the agencies, is it through this statute?
Yes, it's through that statute, but I'll defer to our solicitor Dag Esbaldon on any specifics.
Yes, thank you, Senator Tullahi. And yeah, through that statute, as they being the officers that can request opinions from us, but at the same time, I think it's section three zero one zero two of chapter five, which which basically spells out that we are the legal counsel for the executive branch of the agency. So being the legal counsel, that's also, you know, the mechanism where they can request any kind of legal assistance from, from this office.
Okay, because, so if they request a legal opinion, I guess, pursuant to this statute or just request a legal opinion at a public officer, and that is the same mechanism that we at the legislature are using. It says the Attorney General shall also, when requested, give his opinion to the legislature or members thereof regarding. And then here it says specifically what we could ask. Matters regarding, I mean, sorry, matters relating to enacted laws or the status of case law on a given subject. I always thought that, that, that did a good job of, you know, keeping you out of the fray of, you know, legal battles within the legislature, for example, or just, you know, policy battles within the legislature. I remember when I was counsel to the legislature, there were, there were a few times when I would recommend this, you're trying to ask me my interpretation of an existing law. When really, I thought there were times my, my, anybody's interpretation of existing law does not matter. It's the AG's opinion that matters because it's the AG that's going to either defend that law or not defend that law. And it's the AG's opinion that's going to guide how agencies implement that law. And that's always, that was always a question. It was either how it was being implemented or whether it was really legal or not. And, and we could all opine, but unless we were going to fight you, yeah, we needed to know what was your opinion on it. So I, I find those should remain the priority. They should be prioritized, right? How you are interpreting laws. And that we shouldn't have to go to the, to the Supreme Court just to get a declaratory judgment on those types of things. Because most of the time I found that public officials, they want to just comply. They are very willing to comply with the AG's determination on the matter. You know, otherwise you're going to the Supreme Court and, and it's a much bigger deal. You, you have to know in advance, I think, whether you are going to, to be on the other side of the Attorney General's office, which has happened on occasion, but it, you know, I think, I think policymakers want to know that in advance before they, before they take that on. So I like that being prioritized. So that being said, when in the Attorney General's testimony today, I guess I just want to clarify this part here where it says some of the requests that you've received are, involve irregularity. Not enough information or the request was unclear. That's very understandable, but I guess that's where that communication would be very, we're hoping, I'm hoping easy to just get back to them and say, you know, provide more information or do something, otherwise we can't address this. And it gets like deprioritized, but, but the person who's requesting knows about it right away. Or the other, the other reason given here was legislative legal counsel had already opined on the matter. That one I feel is, I'm, I guess I'm trying to fi- find how that is relevant. If they're opining on how a statute to be interpreted, I don't know, that shouldn't have any weight on how, whether you should opine on that or not. I feel like that, those questions have to be, you know, we want to know the AG's interpretation. It's, I think most, most, like I said earlier, most officials want to defer to the AG when it comes to interpreting existing law. When it comes to interpreting our own standing rules, I totally agree with you, you know, you don't, you don't need to do that. Or interpreting, you know, one, which policy is better than the other one? You don't need to do that unless it affects your office, you know? So there are many times when I'm asked your, your testimony, not necessarily your opinion, but your testimony on bills that will affect your office for sure, whether it's going to impede your prosecution, help your prosecution. And so testimony on bills, I feel like that's also different. It may be less priority than opinions on, on things that obviously senators feel are, that they need to know how you are going to interpret those laws, existing laws. And then it says does not involve an appropriate topic, whether because it involved internal rules, internal disputes. Those I agree with, but this one, potential litigation involving agencies or entities we represent. I don't know, you know, maybe if you could clarify that, because I feel like there's almost anything involved potential litigation for the government of Guam. We're all the government of Guam. We want to avoid potential litigation where we can, but, yeah. But for example, double time, you know, if we ask you, does the, does the statute require, you know, double time? We need to know the answer because we need to either act on it or not act on it, or we need to know whether agencies are implementing it correctly. But of course, that involves potential litigation under the circumstances we're, we're in. So I don't know, how would you, could you clarify that, that like exception? It seems like you are making where if it involves litigation, and I see the statute saying if it involves potential litigation, it doesn't need to be made public. Your opinion doesn't need to be made public, but, but, but it doesn't prohibit that opinion from being given to the official that requested it. I don't know. Could you, what do you think about that? Mr. Esbaldón, I guess. Stephanie, yes.
I can take a stab at it first, and if there's questions specific to Solicitors Division, I'll defer to Dag Esbaldón. If that entire section, if I may, address your comments as a whole instead of that specific one liner, it, it gets exactly to the statutory basis under which opinions are requested and opinions are issued, as you mentioned. And it is actually also our hope that the limitation on what we're requesting on and what we decide to opine on would be guided by those statutory categories. Matters relating to enacted law or status of case law. So on the issue that many of you are touching on for how we prioritize, how we respond to opinion requests, how we screen them, the requests are not necessarily limited that way. So potential litigation involving agencies or entities we represent, internal disputes, internal rules, whether the legislative legal counsel has already opined, those requests that we're receiving sometimes take us into the realm, take us away from the realm of truly looking at a legal analysis of enacted law or status of case law and get into trying to determine certain policy questions, which we almost always refer to that we defer to your branch. Opinion shopping, which is, depending on the issue, we understand that our, you know, our, of course, the opinion of our office carries a certain weight. But if opinions have already been issued, especially with, especially dealing with the legislative branch itself on legislative matters themselves, like you mentioned, we have received requests to interpret the standing rules. We would have a conversation about that instead of writing a written response to the requesting party or before we write a written response to the requesting party. Potential litigation involving agencies could involve requests where it seems that there is something going on, some dispute already going on. And if I may also make a point regarding Senator Tellow's comment that we, how we respond to the governor's office or how we respond to the executive branch, we are their legal office. We represent the, the, the executive branch. So there are different considerations and different steps we take in, or different considerations we make when an opinion request is asking for information about what we're doing in representing our client. Or if we know through our representation of clients that there are other issues going on and the legislature, for whatever reason, is either, has a differing opinion and wants our opinion, wants to see if our opinion aligns with theirs so that they can then respond to whatever they're trying to handle with the particular agency. Because of course you guys have oversight over the different agencies, et cetera. So what that is addressing is that when this whole paragraph really is that of the twenty-two or so requests, just in this term alone, and in total, if we're talking about the request, because some of the senators are touching on outside of legal opinion requests specifically, we've received, including bills, near a hundred different requests from the, this term alone, from the legislature. So as a whole, those are the kinds of things that we're taking into consideration when trying to figure out how we're going to respond or not. Whether it's going to be a phone call or whether it's going to be in writing. But that's also something to tie into an action item for where we go from here. It's something that maybe we can consider in putting together whatever it is, whether it's guidance or, or guidelines or procedures, or how to vet the requests that are coming through our office. And, you know, really looking at what, what is this request for? Where is it coming from? I certainly understand that the thirty to forty policy staffers in the legislature are not all attorneys, but not all of the requests that we receive from your office are necessarily requests that require legal analysis. Some of them are just questions that could be.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I understand all that. And I'm saying, I hear you when you say some of these things are not, they don't fit squarely within the mandate of this statute. This statute mandates AG opinions on certain matters, and I think those should be prioritized. And I think if you prioritize those and you, that's not an issue. If you prioritize these opinions from a public officials over other, you know, requests for testimony on bills or requests for, you know, whatever other disputes you're talking about, those, it's, it's very clear. I think you're, that's, that's, that's good. But I, I just want to stick to this one statute. So if we're talking about opinions based on this statute, how do you prioritize those? And I think more important than whether they're issued in ten days is whether they are issued, you know, that if you are making a priority decision, for example, to issue an opinion on Senator Titigui's request before you issue the opinion on my request. I think this is really the, the meat of this bill. This is what this bill is, I thought, intended for. It's not really necessary to restrict you that you need to do it in ten days because you're slow. It's because we want to make sure there's a process that it's fair. That's, that's my interpretation. And I think that was because we were finding some opinions being issued relatively quickly and some not. And an explanation that, you know, this one is complex, this cannot be issued, we need this much more time on this. Maybe, maybe seeing that that was really, I'm not going to speak for the sponsor, but I agree with that part of this bill, that, that if we can see somehow that the opinions are, are being issued to, you know, public officials fairly, then there's no issue, then this would go away. But, but they're trying to put a timeframe on it because we were now, some, I've, I've heard it from my colleagues, they're unclear when they're going to get their legal opinion from the AG's office. They're kind of stuck, can't move, and then they see other opinions coming out regarding other things. And, and it's just that. So I don't, yeah, I feel like your office knows how to handle this. Yeah, and that you can handle this and that you know what the priorities are supposed to be. And I don't know, unless you, unless you need further clarification on that, I feel. And then again, back to my original question was, when it comes to matters that might involve potential litigation that public officials are asking about, I think, I think there's still a duty to opine on those, isn't there? And just not necessarily to make that public because if, if true that there's potential litigation, yeah.
Sure. And I was, I'm, I was answering your first question as I understood it to be about the irregularities we identified in this paragraph. But if your question is how do we prioritize opinions, then we can address that question as well. But the question about the irregularities, which I understand we didn't respond to because they were irregular, it was just noting that many of the opinions that we get are involved in irregularities. So they would require additional time for us to, or additional review or additional consideration for us to vet the opinion request and work with the request, a member requesting it. That was all. As for responding, I'm not sure. And I, of course, can't speak to before I joined the office, but I'm not sure there's any response that we have not either one of our, someone from our office has spoken with any of you directly and either provided a written response or provided a verbal response or provided a written response. We may have a couple that might still be open, but otherwise we have provided definitely feedback on the initial request and then possibly either a verbal response and there was nothing further needed, or we provided the initial response. I can say the most, one of the most significant ways we address the opinions, as you guys well know, is if there are deadlines, we, when we received the request for the special election, the special election was a week away. When we received a request for, I think, the Jotna mayor, that, you know, that came up in the middle of very time-sensitive circumstances. So obviously with the special election a week away, we're not going to bump that opinion request to take more time to flush it out. We just provided it to you as soon as we could. I think that one turned around in maybe two to three days with the caveat that this was, this was what we could provide within that timeline. But yes, so it depends on the issue and the surrounding circumstances. But I just, in defense of our office, if I may, just, I'd like to make clear that we do respond to each of you, whether verbally or not, on the status of your opinion requests. And sometimes there's no written request wanted or, or expected after those phone calls. So I hope that answers your question.
Well, all right. Well, I'll leave that to the sponsor with it, that, yeah, addresses the need then. But all right, I mean, yeah, I'm just pointing out what I think is, is really the gist of what the concern is here. And yeah, I don't think, I don't think we're going to come up with a time, a number of days that's appropriate for every circumstance. So I'm, I'm a little hesitant to put a number of days on it, but I think, I think, yeah, I think you could better come up with, you know, a resolution as to, just to make it very clear how they're being prioritized, what's the priority that you're going to follow and that you're, everybody's being treated the same. I think that, that would just really go a long ways. And I've heard very good suggestions here. So I want to thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Senator Therese. And, you know, Steph, on your testimony, you identified Texas, one hundred eighty days, Montana, ninety days. And I'm, I'm looking at the bill and I know Senator, Senator Tellow will be the last one to speak here in closing. But, you know, I'm looking at even the fine of a hundred dollars. I mean, I, I'm looking at, we, we do this for the, the education finance is a thousand dollar, and it, it takes the pop right out of the individual. And, and I'm looking at a hundred dollars. That, that almost sounds like a regular traffic violation. And, and if, and if it's going to take a while, and, and that's why I'm going to ask you, the Attorney General's office, you need to give us some, something in writing more than, than what you just gave because you're not offering a suggestion, just the reasons why other states do it. And I don't compare Guam with Texas because Texas is a million people. There's a bunch of other folks that are going to ask for opinions. I'm not going to compare Guam with Montana because why? There's a million people, okay? Guam's one hundred eighty thousand. There's only so many folks. I know you only have so many folks also in your office, but need, need a work of us, Steph, okay? Fred and Carl, work of us, Senator Tellow. I know that the ten working days, okay? Maybe we'll make an adjustment. Maybe we'll make it sixty days. But I'd raise the fine from a hundred dollars to a thousand because there, there need to be teeth to this. And, and I understand the complexity and all that stuff, but we just can't be, we can't just write this out. But letting us know in writing or something, actually, actually resolve some of these issues. Fred knows where I'm coming from because I bother him often. But all I'm saying is that, please work that. And Mr. Xavier, you won't be allowed to ask questions, so please don't, 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 don't wave, okay? Senator Tellow, why don't we go and wrap it up with you? I don't think there's any other questions. Senator Tellow, if you can give your, your closing remarks, and then, then we will talk on the side with the, the office of the Attorney General's office, folks, and we come up with, with a recommended amendment to the bill. All right, Senator Tellow? All right, Senator Tellow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, just have one more question then, uh, either to Steph or Carl, Fred. Um, with regards to the ten day, is is there a particular timeframe that you would prefer rather than ten days? Am I frozen? No, it's not me, right?
Uh, we, maybe we'll pause.
Okay.
I can't say we have a preferred timeline, obviously. I think that's pretty clear. But whatever it is that's decided, what we would ask is um, just that there is a caveat for us to justify why um, the need for more time would be necessary for a particular opinion. And yes, the, the examples of Texas, Montana, and Tennessee were provided, and they're not necessarily comparable jurisdictions, but it was more so to illustrate that across the entire country, here are three. And it's not so much the amount of people, it's just the amount of work that is involved in legal analysis. And even of the three, only two of them even put in a number of days. The other is just as expeditiously as possible. Um.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Yeah, and and I again, I'd like to um, say that I appreciate Steph. Stephanie has been really great, you know, in uh, taking my calls. Um, whether it's to tell me, oh, it's not ready yet, it's not ready yet, but still uh, being able to answer my call. I greatly appreciate that, you know, at least the communication is there. And and Fred and and Carl, thank you so much for taking the time out. I I hear your concerns. And, you know, um, basically, this bill, Mr. Chair too, is is, and my co-sponsors, and I think pretty much everybody in the legislature, um, we have some concerns. There are some issues about fairness. There are some issues about timeline and and getting these important uh, you know, requests or opinions needed uh, quickly. Um, so I I look forward to working with your office. Um, I know the the workload that you have, it's uh, quite extensive. And and but so are other agencies, you know, like I mentioned, Revantaxa, Public Health. I mean, unbelievable amount of work that they have to do there. So um, everybody is really, you know, doing the best they can. And I do appreciate what the Attorney Generals ha- have been doing. You know, I've always been an advocate for your, uh, advocate for your office uh, whenever you guys need anything, and I'll continue to do so. So and I'm asking you uh, to do something for us, the legislature, just to be fair, and um, a decent timeline, because we are all on, all on um, you know, pressure to put certain things out, you know, right away. But um, again, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I look forward, Stephanie, um, we'll, we'll discuss this, Mr. Chair. If we can have maybe a a roundtable or or just have a conversation, a roundtable maybe to, as fast as we can, speaking of time.
Fair, if the AG's office might be, if you have a meeting on this bill, I would like to be invited if there's.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah, absolutely, everybody. Okay, so we can all get involved. Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and again, thank you, everybody, for being here to testify. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Senator Tellow. There being no additional individuals to present further testimony in this bill. The committee will continue to receive testimony uh, following this hearing for acceptance of any additional information or public testimony on the agenda on this bill. You may submit testimony to the mayor room of the Guam Legislature in the Guam Congress Building or through email, Senator Joe S. Nixon at gmail dot com. Uh, again, I want to thank everyone for attending the public hearing and for providing feedback and suggestion. The public hearing is now adjourned. The time now is eleven forty-three. Sisus Masi, please all stay safe, wear your masks, wash your hands, and practice social distancing. You all have a nice day now. Thank you.
Thank you.